I have no idea.
You know how word spreads in this building, come on.
I don't work in this building.
Well, but your whole family does, come on. You can have Lucy tell us.
We don't talk shop.
Come on. Your whole family actually got the answers.
Let's do quarters of us.
Oh, quarters of, oh, there we go. Have to run that by a commish.
Be Dennis.
I don't care. I still say that the thing it just gets me though, you put in quarters. People all the time look at me and say, "You need a car?" "You need a car?" "You should have a car."
They do their, you're gonna drive too.
Well, I said, "Okay, in a, in a normal year, we'll get thirty calls." Some of them, you can talk on the phone and work through and it doesn't need investigated. And then, the ones we go out to, "Am I gonna put him in the car with me?" So, now he need a van. I said, "Okay, so, we pay sixty-five dollars." Okay, and if you, and if we move ten of those people, that's six hundred and fifty bucks.
You pay sixty-five dollars for what?
To move the body. If, if, if we use our van from the funeral, we build a funeral. If an ambulance might do it, 'cause sometimes there are ambulances, we'll pay an ambulance.
That's it.
Sixty, sixty-five bucks. So I said, "How do you, how do you get a car? How do you insure it? How do you buy gas?" I said, "No, it's not happening." "That's, we, we don't need it. I don't need a car. I'll be there."
I'm a waiter.
Me?
Not, not a waiter, I'm brought up to do this.
Oh, you're talking about one? Hey, if I wanted a car, the best thing I would do, I'd arrest the sheriff, see, and then I'd just take his.
You know, you can.
Exactly. So, that's the solution. I'll be out four wheelers.
You like the color of that?
That's not bad, that's kinda like old, something like that. You can't be picky, Bob, that's your problem. Can't wait.
Take the car.
Take the car. You know what, I'll get one of those EMA cars after Chuck's done with them. After.
They've got parking lot, four cars. Hey, damn it, that, that sheriff.
He has sheriff. Oh, for new cars.
I don't, I just overheard a conversation.
No, no, another couple weeks.
A couple weeks ago.
We had, the, the best deal was, we were buying three cars a year, every year. And after four years, you had twelve cars. Three new ones, three year old, three two, and then three that were four years old. Or three years old or whatever, and then, then they fall off, you got three new ones. And the mildest were nice, and they kinda went rotation. One year, my record. Later on, we didn't buy like any cars, or we bought one car. I said, "Okay, we can, we can squeeze it once, but then, I'm gonna have like five sometime that's really on you." And then you're gonna, so, one year, we bought two cars, when do I ask for one? We're gonna get behind it at some point. He can have the board of hand.
Just put your chair.
If he needs to get there quick.
Just deliver van.
Yeah, I found that helps with marketing things, I haven't, I found it. It is. Because it's kinda funny.
I like stuff, I think stuff is good. She gave a bunch of that. No, not really. Sheriff. Yeah, no, I don't have much, oh, because it's all packed. I just nurse you now. Big heart to see him. Right now, I'm just a little higher on it. Of course, speed I drive, I can't keep that far off the road.
What we doing, Brad, help department?
Yeah.
Speed I drive, I'm gonna get you far off the road.
Okay, we're good, we're good, we're good, we're good, okay. So we just need to add that, and just have one that's sixteen to change that.
How about you? We're thinking about it. Yeah, we are thinking about it.
And I think I left a line in there, I didn't leave a line in there.
Yeah, I figure there's no reason not to.
So that's the only thing. Suzanne, we find, and we'll just talk about it, okay?
I was hoping that we could just kind of do department by department, or whatever.
Since I didn't hear anything, so I didn't take it. We have made the changes today.
No.
Right, we did, that is.
We did take it at zero. On what? On, on the centarian, the assistant, uh, the assistant centarian, took it to zero. But we created that emergency, that should be all. But the. If you want a paper.
Yeah, I'm on that. We'll have to massage that one a little bit.
Well, the, the total of that, it's gotta be the two values put together. If the revenue of the grant is ten thousand, we don't need to show that. We just need to understand that she's gonna, 'cause this is what they don't want.
Yeah, but.
So, we need to, we need to account for the expenditure, but where should we account for the? The grant piece needs to be somewhere else then. It can't be in here.
Well, you know, the one here shows the sixteen, but this is the one where you actually did the budget, if you budget, then it's got zero.
Well.
And that's what I was looking for.
Because we moved it up to Emergency Preparedness Director.
It just shows, no, that one just shows then, um, he's got an Emergency Director. Oh, no. So we can't, uh, see when we get to that section. We're gonna have to dig in.
Ready to start? All right, uh, the Tipton County Council, meeting December twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve. Well, I'll give the order, and I'll say a brief prayer, and we'll begin. Your Father, your faithfulness is displayed in the changing of the seasons, and you remind us how faithful you are. And we ask your blessing upon us this evening, that we might do good work on behalf of the citizens of Tipton. That's in your son's name, we pray, amen. All right, first item on the agenda is the salary ordinance. Everyone received a revised salary ordinance. Hot off the presses, moments ago. On the first page.
And one besides could be oh, two.
Uh, this could be two, just two.
Are those pay rates for nine-one-one, this part time, part time, J, within change?
On the, as far as the printing, we've got a typo, I mean, are we gonna take this revised one, massage it tonight, and print out a new one, is that what we're, okay.
I'll, I'll correct it.
Okay, and the sheriff's department, Lee's longevity is a thousand, two hundred, there's an extra one in there.
Wait, are you on, we're doing this sheet?
Front page.
I don't have that.
Right here.
From, this is from the old one. My, my revised one doesn't have that front.
Yeah, it was on the first one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, uh, none of those, of their change, we didn't, we didn't do anything in the title about changing part-time wages, so that can change. I want to make sure it changed on these, but the dates, anything to connect from two twelve to two thirteen?
So, Michael here really changed the steps of dates, but that's other thing.
Yeah, and the fight dates are not.
Two thousand, so that was two thousand and four. Yeah.
Do I got any questions or concerns about that first page?
I don't see anything. These are correct.
Under, under forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Why do you really like that? We were caught that, and we cut down it, adopted version one, before the twenty-four. Where did it come out?
So, water administrator, there's a parentheses, and that looks like another parentheses.
I'm just touching that, so.
That's right.
Three little tattoos there. All right, should we look at the? Each department then?
At the top, how we normally have it, it just said salary ordinance. I've been on this one this time, and still get to maximum salary and wage ordinance. Because when you just have salary, the wage, you're cut to that amount. So this is maximum, settled up to these amounts, so if there's some adjustments needed.
So, we're looking at the clerk?
Two dollars, two dollars. Is that right? Are we, is right, or is it?
Copy that, the gateway, the submission, the project one, let's see how that, how that. Takes us down to the sheriff's?
Getting down to the sheriff.
Uh, and what I was talking about earlier is fine, because it's the total longevity, the eleven-two, how did we get to that?
I think that needs to be, um.
Oh, it's supposed to be one thousand two.
Well, no, no, that's, that's.
It's a total of all these.
But I, I was looking at what John gave us, this is what he asked for. As far as raises, and he had rank pay, and he had longevity on here. His longevity total is nine thousand seven hundred, doesn't include Lee, 'cause she's in the jail, but.
Right.
So, he had three deputies at fifteen hundred, three at twelve hundred, and two at eight hundred. And he's got that adding up to nine thousand seven hundred.
That's what I, that's what I, I was gonna point out.
And that's all I took it from, was, this was his request. So, if people bumped up, would he not have asked for the bump?
I don't know, I just took what he had.
Yeah, what, the eleven-two is what we, what was, what was adopted, and we're just worried about Gateway, uh, to the state.
Well, we also have Lee though, and eight hundred in jail.
In jail, yeah. Ten-five.
Yeah, it actually should be ninety-seven hundred. That's what I have on my budget, people work, ninety-seven hundred.
And if you look at that first page, when do they kick in? See, they gotta have four years to get eight hundred, and, um, okay, in the years of service, Johnson, this is, has a three. Calvin's two, Clark's two, Francis will be the one coming in halfway through the year. So, he's, if his numbers are right, Rhodes, Travis Rhodes, is, that's, that's four years, and he's got the eight hundred showing for that. So, he's got ninety-seven hundred.
That's fine, I just wanna get what he got.
So we want to note that change is eleven-two, that's ninety-seven hundred?
One thing that makes, I didn't, I thought we had that in the sergeant pay?
Yes.
We didn't? She had five hundred each, or seven hundred each?
So, there's a lot.
That should be fifteen hundred.
Okay, now, uh, we reported a thousand dollars to.
See, I, I had on my people work, five hundred.
But it's just totals that we need, we just took some money from longevity. I mean. Yeah, we're just paying it, it's at fifty, that'll be ten.
I had two at five hundred each, on my, on my people work.
I had it two spots, that's why, 'cause you're, you're right, I see a two of five hundred here, I had it somewhere else, different. He asked for seven fifty each, and we did, we did it on five, there right to the end.
Okay, so that needs to be two, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, Brad, let's go back up there to that maximum, deputy maximum, minimum.
I had in my notes last year, the minimum, we raised it to twenty-nine thousand, 'cause he was looking at a new hire. Actually, both of those new hires, Calvin and Clark, and we said that new hire would be twenty-nine. So I assumed, if we were gonna say a minimum, we should say the twenty-nine. Then, the maximum, this year, we've got three at making thirty-six, we gave a thousand dollar raise. So I, I assumed we would say thirty-seven, no longevity or rank pay, just the base pay, maximum. And that's what I had in my notes.
Early could be twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
And then on overtime, I had ninety-five hundred, you have, you have ninety-five, he has ninety-five, I have, I have ten thousand.
I had ten.
I had ten also.
I had on my notes, he asked for.
He asked for fif- fifteen thousand.
Yeah. And I put subtract five thousand. Asked for fifteen, I put it, and then minus five thousand, so I.
I just marked my half with ten thousand. What was the minimum?
This is a bit of nine.
So I say, I always got, I, I mean, those are.
I'm.
He sees that he's gonna have to have more than, you know, I could have.
I'm good with that, yeah.
And on certification, I had five thousand, I had it knocked down, it's definitely five hundred to five thousand. Can you remember there? What did you submit on?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't have any changes, and it, it was seventy-five this year, I had, he'd ask for seventy-five next year.
So two changes there. Actually, there's three. The, the minimum is twenty-nine thousand, maximum thirty-seven thousand, and longevity is ninety-seven hundred.
And then we're gonna add two to it, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, it's already in there.
You can break it out.
Yeah, all right, the sergeants, we need to reduce to eleven, to thousand.
And I also have the green total, it was a thousand total.
It was?
Those five hundred each.
Okay, all of this revised one.
This revised is fifteen.
This, this one would be hard.
Mine says, mine says a thousand.
Fifteen hundred says Calvin.
This says. Oh, wait, I'm working on, I'm working off the, the first one.
You're working on, or two, three?
Sergeant. Oh, yeah, you did. So there's two changes. Okay, so this kind of. Ninety-seven hundred longevity is one thousand for sergeant.
Right.
Okay.
If you can check.
Okay, so this, so this, twenty-nine is okay, thirty-seven is okay, then ninety-seven hundred, and then, we've got a thousand, yeah, a thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
What's that do to the totals?
Well, I don't have the, um, what is it, retirement money's in here, which is still an investment of eighteen thousand, but I have four hundred and five thousand even for deputies, everything else. I just put the total appropriation.
That's, and that's what I had, was, was four hundred and five thousand.
Can you check on Gateway, what you submitted for the total deputy pay?
And yes, Suzanne, that's gonna be long.
Four hundred. Uh, for, the total sheriff, commander, captain, major, sergeant, deputy office, total four hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred.
'Cause the rank pay and sheriff. If you look straight at the deputies, what John asked for, for, for the pay this year, was three ninety-three. There's twelve people on the list, so if we add twelve thousand, that's four to five.
Yeah, that's okay.
The thing, the thing about the last one, Francis won't get hired till halfway through the year. So his thirty thousand really should be fifteen, so we could take fifteen out of that, we really need three ninety-nine.
But on a salary one, it's really, you don't even have to have these department totals, those probably all come off, and that's not.
Wait, what I, what I think would be nice.
You've got, you've got the budget, but.
If, as you, as you work the publication, the actual document, yes, but then a worksheet, 'cause Suzanne, I created this, this layout, and I really like the logo. So if you had, had a worksheet.
Add on to the last one.
Yeah.
I have total five hundred, two thousand, seven hundred, but that doesn't have any, any, uh, retirement, which is a hundred and fifty. But we don't have, we don't have that on the salary. I don't think we need any of that, but we're.
Yeah, it's nice to have in a meeting like this.
That's only goes to the original, you can take that one after. So your four hundred and eighty-five thousand, and then the sheriff, sixty-five thousand, and deputies, four hundred and five thousand, and whatever.
Oh, we've got jail commander.
Well, that's jail, that's not.
I'm sorry, that's town. I hope we got there.
Yeah, I don't.
Sheriff.
Um, we got rank pay, uh, three thousand for the major, fifteen for the captain, and then a thousand total for those sergeants, so three, five thousand five hundred there.
And then I had the sheriff, the deputy, the major, captain, so I had four hundred seventy-five thousand.
And then, you've got longevity. And you put longevity into the ninety-seven hundred.
And certification, all of those numbers together, five hundred, two thousand, seven hundred. I just wanna make sure that Kerry makes a double check, and he sends out his budget, or the sheriff's budget, that on that line item, the deputy line item, it, it shows a total of four hundred and five thousand. So he's got that, he has that, but he's got a five hundred in here for jail.
Well, the next one, we should, the jail, so. Is that on your advertisement, pretty fucking, or?
It's what we sent to council, we didn't, yeah, to the. Well, we feel comfortable with that, and.
On the, on the sheriff's, those, those two number changes.
What about surveyor?
That was good.
Okay, so it's good.
Word is good.
All right.
Everybody has a issue. This was good.
Title four D. Prosecutor.
Sixteen. Richman's right, that's right. I don't have a problem, I don't wanna discuss anything until we get down to the jail.
I did, I did circle that, county council's coming out of candidate, and I like it, putting that there in full.
That's right.
Yeah, but, but I think that's good.
I did now the commissioners too.
Right.
I need the board of commissioners, playing commissioners.
On, on the board of commissioners, get, get asked about.
Well, on the board of commissioners, I broke down, we broke down their pay today, three hundred and twelve-four, and then, the rest is to get in that drainage, as long as they're on the drainage board, if they're on drainage board, and then only. And if you go to the back page on drainage board, I put drainage board commissioner member is fifteen hundred. And then.
Is it nine thousand dollars there?
We're gonna show five members, which would be seventy-five hundred.
Do the other two members, the other members get paid?
There's six.
What did they get paid a year? Well, the other.
They're not getting paid right now.
Not currently paid.
No, but next year they were going to.
Yes.
Fifteen hundred a pay, or a year?
Year.
It should've been a hundred and fifty times twelve.
A hundred and fifty?
That'd be eighteen hundred.
Right.
That would make the nine thousand, that makes sense then.
And, and if, if that's the case, if the commissioner serves on that drainage board, then they got their three hundred dollar raise.
Their three hundred dollar raise, right.
'Cause if you'd added both of them together, that was this year's number plus three hundred dollars.
Okay. We need to add that need change, and I think we need to address that one too then.
But the, um, the resolution was that the commissioners, in a five-member drainage board, the commissioners had to serve.
Right, that one that we looked at.
Well, we, we took fifteen hundred dollars out of the commissioners each, right, and made eighteen hundred dollars in drainage, right, each.
All right, that's, well, we get to that, that's, that's gotta be changed.
That's worth nine thousand.
And then I think we need to put in there that it's per meeting, because they don't get paid if they're in meetings, just like this. Anyhow.
Well, all the reports are that.
Yeah, the way I've got it, they would get that eighteen hundred dollars, regardless if they're in meetings or not.
Well, on the front page, in the verbiage, you wanna state that board, board stipends or whatever are, are.
Contingent.
You qualify if you attend or something, I mean, put some type of line in there.
Contingent on attendance?
It'll stay that way all the time, and we'll have to keep all that.
Yeah.
Just add a line to that front page, or back page, or.
The, maybe eighteen hundred dollars per member on drainage board, then would give the, uh, the other two members the three hundred, by three hundred dollar raise.
Eighteen hundred, oh. They give them eighteen hundred dollars, and they never got paid for anything, so, it's, it's brand new money for the.
Okay, so we're okay with the board of commissioners?
Playing commission. Okay, that's gonna be. Circuit court. Probation.
Okay, probation, we got this, for the officer, chief officer, probation officer, that's sixty thousand seventeen. If death is what the state indicates. They're paid there. Now, um, and that's what we proved, but when we get into the clerical, and that's Carol's payment, it's broke out in two areas. And that's why I tried to note on here now, cause the balance, the full pay's at five oh four, and on five oh four, I went back and studied some general part two. So let me know there's half and half. I just tried to make notes, since we've got so many new people coming on, and people leaving, Gary trying to, you know, um, it's really hard unless you have the. How to experience with it.
When I flip, go to the probation, adult probation on the next page, and that amount needs to be the fifteen thousand.
Right, it's gotta be changed.
Okay.
I, I didn't get it.
Okay, that's fine. But it's a total of both, for those who's spots.
Right, but I wanna make sure that the twelve-four, we got, so we got twelve-four, and then the fifteen. Twenty-seven four, and I came out with what I think we're at, twenty-seven, three ninety-eight.
Yeah, three ninety-eight, that's two dollars.
Two dollars difference in what we've got actual budget, that our pay should be. We could go to the six hundred before she's out. So it should be twenty-seven. Twelve, three ninety-eight, she probably goes on the other one. Cause the four. You'll have a little bit left in your mind, but to make her actually six hundred, or everybody else's. You agree that's?
I don't know, do we wanna work for, at the same as the first second?
I don't know, I just took the pay that she committed, of those spreadsheets.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, I guess I agree with this.
Were we not given her?
She's not, um, I would not, I would. I know it's what she.
In, in eleven, we paid her totally out of adult probation, five oh four fund, and that was twenty-six, two ninety-eight. In eleven. So if you said twenty-six, three, we gave a five hundred dollar raise for this year. But we split, put some of it in general fund, so that, that's how we're seeing our difference.
It's really scary the way that, um, I think that split, we saw a main reason, because the total. And I go back to eleven, which had a whole now.
Uh, the, the adult probation is the user fees, which helps on the general fund piece, but that balance was a little off, so we just kinda split it for twelve.
We added the raise to fifteen, five hundred.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Make that change, we'll get back over to page, I'll work down. EMA. Jail.
I had on the full-time cook, the full-time checkbook, that should be thirty-four, seven thirty-four. Should be thirty-four, seven thirty-four.
Oh, yeah, should be seventy-four.
Seventy?
Yes.
I have twenty-five thousand five hundred, and maybe also.
That's what I should have submitted. What was that, only a seven thirty?
Seven one five.
And that's what twenty-five, right?
Yes, I had twenty, I had one one five.
And on part time, I have ten thousand.
I agree. Yes.
Over time, I have three thousand.
Yes.
And on general, twelve thousand.
Yes.
So that's something in twelve.
Right.
And then.
What do you think, most establishment?
Well, up to everyone knows, I went back and looked at some of the history, as to, cause we've got a full-time cook that possibly may retire. And we talked about not wanting to bring a new cook in there, cause we could have a full-time cook in there, got higher rates, and we gotta establish something for them to come in at. And so I went back and just kinda looked at what some of them have made, and about twenty thousand four seventy-five, pretty much. When I look back at Susan's spreadsheet, and then look at, we have, we have the jailers, they all be paid, you know. I mean, there's no, no set number of rights, that was just what I looked at, I came back to. And then also we looked, I thought we needed to set maximum and a, and a new hire on the turnkey jailer. And that fits in the line of what you're paying.
I don't have a spreadsheet on the jailers. I'm not sure, we gave them a thousand dollar raise, what the max, what you come up with that number of max. I got last year's ordinance, I printed it real quick. The highest that I see on turnkey jailer was thirty thousand eight thirty-seven.
Thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand eight thirty-seven.
Then that's five hundred dollars difference.
Yeah. So, so we, but we gave a thousand already, but.
I didn't notice we gave a thousand, cause I don't think I submitted any joke, we really did.
Okay, we did, but, but what happens if somebody left this year, and they were really high paid, could it happen?
Well, that's why I wanted to see us put a minimum in.
Right, well, the, I was talking about the max. I don't know that that maximum, I direct, because the other one is, the next highest is thirty thousand thirty-five. So that would be thirty-one thousand dollars, thirty, thirty-one thousand thirty-five. So. I guess without looking at the payroll, Greg, I don't, I don't know that, I, I wouldn't really wanna set a maximum there, if we're not accurate.
You wanna take time to look at that payroll, or no? That's one option.
I'm curious, if that being, of those eight jailers, is another pay.
Um, looking at this, I'm, twenty-six thousand sixty-four dollars, and this, this is this year's ordinance.
And I looked at longevity on this jailer, so I would've been there for a long time.
Oh.
So, I mean, you can.
There's, um, there's one, two, there's three at that rate. There's, um, the twenty-six, nine, one, two, three, four of those, five, six, six of those. There's the twenty-seven, six eighty-nines, there's two of those. And that, that's, that's the base, I mean, that's where it's at.
I think, the reason I tried to change that a little bit on these, on this ordinance, is because how we've been doing in the past, we had a bunch of them on there. And we've got all these names, and Brian might talk about, and we're like, they're no longer there, they're no longer there, they're no longer there. And we were just carrying those numbers on our ordinance. Did time, maybe starts from name on the ordinance, but you go back to the spreadsheet, you can tie into that.
That's where I think your worksheet would pay.
My worksheet's gotta, you're right, and it's gotta apply, and it should apply, but, you know, that's how, you know, the most of us, but. To just put jailer, plus the jailer, 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 so much, so much, I mean, it says, like, you've got three of them at this, probably, like you said, three at this rate, four at this rate. You know, you got, some coming in, you got a maximum, anyone in between there, they should, they should be able to take the payroll that they got, that's six hundred if they want, shouldn't have to for all this other time.
Right. The, uh, what, what do you think, that they're gonna work for a week, if it, because I know the courthouse is like thirty-six hours, dispatch is thirty-six. So if you said, if the jail staff worked thirty-six, are you, okay, even if they were, let's just, let's, let's say thirty, thirty-six hours. Those two new hires, the twenty-two thousand for a new hire, um.
Jailers following to the classification, please, fire, okay? If they're following that, that's they don't.
No, it's always, all the way.
I don't think so. If they did the thousand eight hundred and seventy-two hours, that's eleven seventy-five.
Well, what if it just go back to?
I think of, uh, large organizations, bigger, you know, cities and stuff, and their terminies and numbers, and, and they probably don't tie, like we do that. They don't, they don't tie to a spreadsheet, and we'll go back and look at those individuals, they just say, you know, for example, Phil, they just say, here's a minimum, here's max, and go over there.
Well, I think the important thing is, is that Greg staff can tie the correct number to whose, whose who, and it doesn't exceed what we appropriate.
And that's why I sent him, he's got all that back up, he does it.
And, when they make a new hire, cause it, one year when the money was really tight, we put out, left my little to everybody and said, if somebody leaves. You're not gonna rehire at that hire rate, you needed to come to the council or to meet some discussion. Um, because there were just selective hires coming in and paying at that same rate, so. I guess if you're saying these are minimums, or establishing a minimum, it lets those, those certain departments know where they can start at. But if a second deputy leaves, where do you wanna start him?
Well, maybe that's something we need to address on this then, that all new hires, that we need for, maybe said that they, they're trying to stop them.
Well, and.
How would you work that, for required to do the minimum?
Well, that we ended up, on the other side of that argument was, they're still doing the same work as the second deputy. I mean, just because they had been here for three years, you expect them to still function the same as the person that left, so why wouldn't they be paid second deputy?
I think that decision needs to be, like, if we have to be official. I mean, they can be official, we know that they have range, and if they sort of choose, they can start a little.
Well, that's why I said the, a minimum and a max, that they're not letting their pay.
Well, we ended up, then we have where there was like a ninety-day probationary period, where they received ninety percent of the appropriation, and then they could get a hundred. That was an over one too. Yeah. You hired in at ninety percent of whatever was established for that position, and after a certain amount of time. So, I have many ways to look at it. Or maybe not, maybe just a couple of years into it. And the important thing is, is if your department had, if you're gonna hire somebody, you need to know what you can tell them if you're gonna pay them.
It has to be by the experience.
Yeah.
Anyone losing.
You hate to tell them one thing, and then find out, oh, no, why.
I think we need to set the, the minimum and a maximum, so they got to work, and then they probably work that within their budget numbers.
And also provide for them a starting point, at least minimum, so they're having their minds.
Yeah.
At least a reference point.
I'm not saying that they get paid a million, and that's why I told you.
All right, so how we wanna do now? We, we wanna change those minimums, maximums? You wanna, do we wanna look at that pay right now and look?
The minimum's eleven seventy-five, I believe that, I'm just, the maximum, I think we're okay, because what I'm looking at here for this year.
So do we wanna, is it okay with the cook, for the, the new hire cook?
Let me punch it in, see what that would be at right.
How do you feel about a new retired, uh, full-time cook making less than what they're part-time assistant?
That's, yeah, cause at that rate, it would be ten dollars and ninety-three cents, ninety-four cents.
Which could potentially be less.
Yeah. That's eleven and a quarter.
So take eleven and a quarter and figure out, what, thirty-six hours?
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what he worked, cause memory said they don't work, they're full-time, but they don't work full hours. Memory said he has a part-time, when it comes in and finishes out some of it.
The full-time, he had, like, day shift, doing, I thought, I thought forty hours, but maybe not. And if you took the eleven and a quarter. It needs to be twenty-one thousand sixty dollars to get eleven and a quarter, thirty-six hours a week.
Okay, let's, so eleven and a quarter, and twenty-six, what?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand sixty dollars. Thirty-six hours a week, that's eleven and a quarter. I'd almost leave it the same as a jailer, I'd make it twenty-two. That's eleven seventy-five.
Maybe it's a maximum. Okay, cause they're bringing the less than eleven and a quarter starting in.
I'm good with that.
I just can't think of more. Okay, so now we have the maximum on this.
If, if, if this high-paid, the highest-paid person did stay, had the thirty thousand. Eight thirty-seven, we gave him a thousand dollar raise, we need to make it thirty-one, eight thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So we're just off five hundred dollars there.
Yeah.
Like, so I'm, I'm looking at this year's, right now.
I think that's, I didn't have any, um, I was gonna, I was gonna, like, during the year.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, it's, it's in the different part of the.
And for a total jailer pay, what did you submit on jail?
The turnkey jailer, line, uh, three hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars.
All right, does that cover all the jail?
Are we adding in the line for the jail commander, five hundred, will it fit into this spot?
Yep. And then the first year, we'll just have to do, uh, that's what we should change that, the sheriff of the jail.
You guys agree with each other?
Yeah, five hundred. It left it by itself, so it didn't hide anybody specific.
Are you okay with taking these department totals off?
Yeah, I am.
I, I still like, like this, where you've got jailer, 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 those amounts. Because I think as you're adding raises, it's easier to throw that column in, and put your line in, so.
But that other spreadsheet breaks right out like that.
Yeah, so you, when you do a future budget, cause otherwise, the thing I get concerned about is, we have, um, fourteen jailers. And all of a sudden, if you see fifteen or thirteen, your number's gonna be skewed, you're gonna say, well, we can cut thirty thousand or twenty. And you don't realize that somebody quit, and you don't get on seeing that line, so I'd like, I'd like to see the positions dedicated, so that it flows on, on worksheet.
Yeah, and that worksheet, that's, uh.
Okay, that, are you okay with that? Okay, that, are you okay with that? You made the proper notations there. Soil and water? Good with that?
Yeah.
Drainage board?
We need to change those to eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred?
And then go back and work through something, like Brad said, to, on this, word, word number.
I think, on that wording...
How many did he say?
I would say...
Per meeting?
No, a hundred and fifty dollars a month, if you satisfy the requirements for the month. What happens if you have two meetings in a month, or you have extra, a special meeting come in? I don't think you wanna say a hundred and fifty per meeting. A hundred and fifty a month, if you meet the requirements of that month.
I put attending monthly...
Just, just somehow... Yeah.
I put contingent upon attending monthly.
That is what, the per meeting, because if they throw a couple extras in, then you're... That's fine, monthly meeting.
So we keep down the drainage board, those, those, reassessment?
That's all part-time.
You know, part-time? And then dispatch, that.
Dispatch, nine-one-one. The, uh... 'Cause it comes out of those two.
Comes out two.
Oh.
So we had to add something, but I had to put on this one, and then...
Chuck sent me the, the spreadsheet on this app, apparently. If you look at the six hundred dollar raise, divided by the thousand eight hundred seventy-two hours, that's thirty-two cents. So, his highest-paid person would be fourteen ninety-four, and the lowest-paid person is twelve seventy-six. And the way that everything works out, that two hundred seventeen does include the on-call pay, 'cause he takes it out of that fund. So he's included everything in that volume. Yeah. Remember that little color sheet he gave us, it showed, um... 'Cause he shows the two different funds, since.
So our eighteen seventy-four, eighteen seventy...
Eighty-two.
Eighteen seventy-two, how you're at seventy-four?
Just have a minimum, maximum. Is that satisfied?
Now, on that total, you only leave that total, two seventeen there, so you can see it. Because otherwise, when I say have to see the appropriation...
I'd rather not have the number, I see there.
All right.
Yeah, that's a whole thing.
Reassessment, she, they changed their number, she had, um, she was the old one twenty-four, which was, then they changed to eleven eighty-eight, reassessment two thousand fifteen.
So, uh, what about the next one, dispatch statewide, nine-one-one, got the director there, part-time, that's another overtime.
Yeah, that...
Is that okay?
Yeah, those, those would be exact numbers.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And those didn't change, well, the director did, that was the six hundred dollar, or the, the raise was there, the rest of those numbers are all the same.
Can we make corrections?
Okay, we need some changes in here. Her, her, her budget's gone from July first to June thirty-first, and so we're off the year. So actually, what our budget ordinance show last year reflected two thousand eleven, and it, so it looked like she, with what she submitted this year, it looked like she got a thousand some dollar raise, but she really, the state adjusted her raise on that one grand, so it looked like she got a big raise, and she didn't, she didn't actually, because we didn't go in, and July first, and then our salary ordinance to show her true pay, so, so in April, when she did her, um, we've been sparring states and the raise been approved, and it has to be initially appropriated, you know, till, but then in the break, then they give, will be a newer salary list to match that. So I just kind of couldn't do that work with the year, which July first, June thirty-first, and then that's how stated. Um, and so the...
So do we have any reductions, and then, yeah, they have to be...
We, we write that, yeah, we write it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, our funds ledger, um, the year is supposed to end, and then that, let me start for you. I mean, what's happened since I left, that I had it set up to where, on July one, then we get the roll of your, for those, to be specific.
I was just trying to match up these tables, but I didn't match up. So that's why I put in the print these, that, these reflect July first of two thousand twelve to June thirty-first of two thousand thirteen. And then, um, her part, or her juvenile coordinator, um, has gone to part-time. So Allison has her, and the first one, and she opened it, and she said no, and if that coordinator's in, I'll three eighty-seven, is, is zero, yeah. Three eighty-seven, yeah, and then juvenile coordinator's zero, and then, um, and then they were paid like, um, twenty, like, two thousand twenty-one, like, sixteen, or sixteen, twelve, sixteen, sixteen. And then, she actually was like eighty-nine, and then she, eight-five, something, or just like that, two thousand five hundred fifty-five. She got a little job, she was nervous, and I thought, she was never, it, it, so they had to increase July first of two thousand twelve, so we actually had two thousand twelve. And at thirty thousand oh ninety-nine, states say, that was the same on the lawyer's spreadsheet.
Everybody okay with that one? Adult probation, we gotta change it.
Okay, we got, so we need to make that on criminal assistance?
Yeah.
We need to make that fifteen, then that will balance out with our general fund, but... On probation officer, chief, we didn't give raises, so they got a raise on the state side, and we didn't get raises, like, we have to administer those, and that's fine. But on our budget sheets, it shows zero probation officer, and last year she was given thirty-one hundred, I don't know that we can, to cancel, to cut her thirty-one hundred dollars. To cut her thirty-one hundred dollars pay?
She didn't get cut. It's, it's hard to follow, but...
I, I, yeah, I'm saying that, I mean, then, because the two together give her the pay.
For eleven, for two thousand eleven, we budgeted forty-four thousand four ninety in general, and thirty-one hundred in a five oh four, so what's that make?
Thirty-one hundred?
Thirty-one hundred, so that's forty-seven thousand five hundred nine, forty-seven five. This year, our state mandated that we pay, or fifty thousand, oh, I'm sorry, this, this was last year's, or for, for this coming year, um, the state mandated forty-eight nine, so, what was she at, forty-seven?
Seventy-five nine.
So she got a fourteen hundred dollar raise. Now, the state mandated part comes out of the general fund. So, when Rick would present this, as he did for this year, the state mandates for thirteen, that we pay a probation officer, and the fifteen to nineteen-year, fifty thousand seventeen dollars. So what'd she get this year, forty-eight? Forty-seven five ninety?
Right.
And she's gonna get fifty, so how much of a raise is that? Okay, so, on the state mandate, we were presented, the last eight years that I've been here, when we looked at, he gave us this sheet, that gave us the brackets, in the adult probation fund, which is user fees, when the staff would fall between the fifteen and nineteen, it, let's, there's a five thousand dollar difference between fifteen and twenty, so he would take the one thousand dollars, 'cause you've been here for the sixteenth year, and he put it in probation, and on the seventeenth year, he'd give you another thousand, so he was bung, making bums through here. But, if you looked at these charts going backwards, the state already mandates the raise.
Right.
So, you don't have to step through the years, 'cause the states are already doing it for you. So we were given the state mandated raise, and if it was between five and ten, or ten and fifteen, fifteen and twenty, they were asking for the steps in there to come out of probation user fees. So we were actually doing a double raise every year, depending on where the bracket was. Last year, the probation officer fell on fifteen, so that's why he said, just do what the state mandated, zero out of here, because the raise was built in. This year, for sixteen, he wanted to be in that bracket, but it's a brand-new bracket, and so why, why did we do both bums?
Okay, so on him, do we believe that was six hundred?
Well...
I mean, it's the same scenario.
It's the same scenario.
It's, if he left him in there, but we took mine out.
I know, I know. So, I mean, if you're gonna be consistent, if you're gonna be fair overall, if the state takes your brackets every year and raises, and I, you can go online and look at this, 'cause I pulled up twelves, and I got thirteens, and, and they're already raised, they're, they're twelve hundred, seventeen hundred dollar raises, whatever, I'm like...
Which thirteen was the first time they had a raise in that, 'cause I pulled up eleven and twelve, and they were the same.
Okay.
So they weren't getting a raise that year.
So then, and he would put in a raise, uh, for probation?
If you were in between the brackets, that, those years.
And the justification was just to keep it?
Well, if there's a five thousand dollar spread over five years, and he would just mark you to that where it is, but...
State.
The state mandated for the chief probation officer, twelve, to get fifty-eight eight, that's what they mandated. For thirteen, they mandated sixty thousand seventeen, so, you know, there's...
And that doesn't require the family having to pay any more than what the state mandates. It talks about, you have to give them a percentage, if they haven't met that criteria yet, if you're trying to get them up to that pay, but if they're already up there, it doesn't say that you have to give them anything more.
Right.
So, so the thirty-six hundred is potentially above and beyond what's required.
Who do you accept it with?
Well, we put it in, initially, but...
Put it in, but we haven't included it in the salary.
That in order...
What was his total pay of two thousand twelve?
Um...
Yeah, thirty-one.
He got fifty-eight thousand eight thirty-three, plus thirty...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-six, 'cause that was where it's five hundred dollar raise, my question, for this year, for twelve. So three thousand six hundred.
So sixty-two four thirty-three, so I, I think we left that thirty-six hundred in there, but just didn't lower his pay for two thousand thirteen.
The state's mandated the sixty thousand seventeen, so I don't, just split the difference of that fund with the two thousand, whatever, to, to leave it the same.
To leave it at the same twelve K, I was pushing?
Yeah. No reduction.
I'm okay with that, I, I know, I remember this coming up every year, Rick, you explain it like that, but he didn't tell us the part that the state's raising it, the brackets were being raised the same time we were.
But they weren't, two years ago.
Two years.
Two years ago.
I didn't go back and pull them, I'd be on eleven and twelve, but, but they weren't, not every year, 'cause they got a raise, this was the first raise, I mean, he...
That would be two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars.
Eleven one?
Two thousand four hundred and sixteen.
Maybe if you make the twenty-four, twenty-five, I don't know, somewhere in there, I mean... I think one of the things that got us into this, my first or second year, we were really general fund, trying to, to conserve that, and so we went up and asked, and we looked at the cash balance, and they thought probation, and we shoved a lot of salary over there. So you, you're looking at two locations, and you're trying to, you're trying to watch the state mandate, and so it was difficult to follow.
It's like Charlie's getting paid out of the book, or...
So we slowly started bringing stuff back to the county general fund, because we were using a lot of the user fee dollars, the balance was shrinking. So, so in essence, we, we'd been given, we gave a five hundred dollar raise, we gave a six hundred dollar raise, and if the state's mandating, you know, twelve, fourteen hundred dollar raises, we probably should act on our county raise. But, we're not aware of that.
Should we make it come out to where it's like a six hundred dollar raise? Instead of the same pay, of sixty-two four thirty-three, make it sixty-three thirty-three?
Just do it something... That's what we didn't do, it's giving the raise, we're giving out the county for you, because we weren't getting the raise on state side, but we did with this one.
Yeah, and I think what Brad explained, it was the process that we were, we were trying to, 'cause the process is a little bit different, we were trying to make it fair and all those. I, I feel like, if we, if the raise is given to state, even though the process is a little different, it's still...
So he doesn't know.
Yeah.
It seems to me like when you have a base pay, then you would be giving increases, and it would be bringing you up to the next state mandated pay raise. So is it like we're running off of somewhere in the county, which, it has, you know, if current pay exceeds, that the state has brought a pay up to?
Uh, I think what, derive, and I think what Brad's trying to suggest is that we... Yeah, and we try to keep it aligned with that state mandate, this is probably a good way to at least try to address that.
I don't think you're gonna be able to do it once.
Yeah.
I think it's, um, it, it should be kind of a phased in, or it'll take a couple of years, but, um, I think the important thing would be to watch the state mandated schedule, and they always give it to us, but I think that the bigger thing is the understanding of how it related to the last year, and the last year, and the last year. So if the state's mandating that raise, we gave it to, we gave double raises for a while, so now maybe we should try to slow it down. If you're gonna give to the state mandated total salary, if that's where you wanna be, that's the goal, then we've exceeded it for a while. So maybe if you wanna back it off and try to get closer, but I don't think you can do it one quickie.
Your eye?
I'm gonna pull up tens, and see what it shows. But I just, I think the comparison is the important piece, for ten, um... Well, for ten, it was the fifty-three eight thirty-three, plus five thousand for the chief, so he ended up with fifty-eight eight thirty-three. For ten, yeah. For ten, yeah. Which is why we put the six hundred dollar, or went to that. So you want to stay at the same goal?
It's not, it's not, we're on page. And between the increase from between the sixteen... You see, I'm gonna turn it to the thousand, for, yeah.
He says, I'm sorry, he said twenty-four, sixteen. Okay, thank you.
Are you sure how that's just a total, a lot of them aligned, seventy thousand for it? And you, and you gotta disprove it right again. And the, um, the chief jurors, I think that needs to be taken out. The contract and, okay. And the...
If you're in the jury, do you just get a certain amount per day, is that what it is at the end?
Yeah, I think so.
We, we budgeted, we budgeted twenty, uh, twenty dollars, but I don't know if you used much of it.
In the salary, I should, I should, they were just the ten thousand for years.
So they have a national contract, a written contract, that's why these people?
The state.
Are they getting, are they getting, are they getting a ten-nine, or are they getting a check?
Well, they would do it ten...
For the state mandates, what we have to pay. I mean, that...
I think so. I don't know, I don't remember everything. I think that would probably make a difference if they did it ten, or ten, seven, two.
Let's say it's a ten-nine, nine.
Maybe if you take out the ten thousand, see, it should, it could be a full year at the county.
Yeah.
Or a...
A trade in board. Strange board. The, the election board members, or, 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 or...
Well, I know sometimes the state, the state...
It, it doesn't matter, I just...
Well, if the state's...
Do you know, do they?
Yeah, just gonna ask, because it's, we need it.
Yeah. Do you want jury duty? Do they, um, get paid out for vehicles, or do they get a, um, the regular thing? I don't think we go from, I don't know, the salary. She's gonna use one, is it a claim?
So just they off?
Just they off.
My way?
I can't break into these. I left them lying behind, I'll zoom it through. But I, I would like to see a high and low on those, so we don't have all this adding in there every time, but... But they just, like, you go from a driver operator, and you go into a special operator, and then...
Student operator.
You got, yeah. So, I suppose, operator.
But, do you remember about the special operator, how that came about?
I don't. I've left it.
Have something to do?
There was, everybody was paid a certain rate. And then there were a couple of new hires that really had skills that they needed. To operate some of the more advanced equipment, they wanted to pay them a higher rate than a new hire. They created a new category to be able to do that. They were there.
They don't make it anymore.
Right. But it's justified, and the new hire, you pay them.
Bring it in. So it's definitely like experienced new hire, experienced something like this.
Greater impact.
That's why we need to do a minimum maximum.
Yeah, let's do that.
And they're, they're both not there now.
Is there a need for...
Well, once they're there, then it's changed.
Okay, well, tell me, just do him in a...
Okay, and you can probably re, put them down, driver operator. There probably, there is probably no special person anymore, I mean, like, if the ass there. So, but it's the same rate, so really.
Did you have an idea on that?
Much, just like, you know, these, you know, they...
I, I asked on the, on the clerical assistant there on the, on that first section, is that a part-time office person? Or is, you know, we're just putting an extra six hundred dollars in there?
It's a part-time person.
Well, we gave the six hundred dollar raise. It was part-time, I mean, it, it's highway money, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical of it.
Okay, but where's Sherry at?
Is she the engineering assistant inspector?
Yes.
Yes.
I would say we should not have six hundred dollars there. What did we bash the budget for?
For which one?
The clerical assistant.
Three, five hundred.
So we didn't increase it?
I suppose we did.
Yeah, five hundred dollars. It was three thousand, it was, published amount, we changed it to three, five hundred.
Not forty-one? Okay, that's... And that's an hourly rate, so it's just available to pay part-time people, right? Because it doesn't tie in to specific person.
Okay.
So where's...
Thirty-five, hundred.
So it is thirty-five, okay. I was looking at a couple of different versions, and that's why I was asking.
So her title is engineering assistant inspector?
Yes.
Hey, can I get your title, if you want?
So, um, we'll use just, we'll go back to just the driver operator on the other ones, we'll eliminate the special operator, is that what we wanna do?
Well, they've got, he's got, he's got...
Well, it's the same rate, or I'm saying right.
He's got eleven of them listed as, as driver operator.
Make a break in that one.
Yeah.
He had two of them listed as special.
Should we ask him, ask Larry, to see if he wants to move the special operator to that new driver operator?
Yeah, I, I don't think I'd wanna change it unless he... It's all right, I would. But I, I know it was the justification, that was the discussion.
Okay, well, so we do driver operator, a minimum maximum, unless the special operator is the same in the maximum.
All right.
Then that leaves out the two things that might have split them out. And then you have special operator.
So you just wanna divide by the hours, or?
They do, they do a forty hour week.
I'm not sure, I was wondering if they did that there.
So the maximum's gonna be thirty-two, eight, thirty-four, two, eight, four.
Does the county highway do a forty hour week, do you know? Start at six. How much do they do forty?
So, so if there's, um...
Is it seven to three?
I'm pretty sure it's government, it's inserted.
That rate of thirty-four, two, eighty-four, that's sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Sixteen, eighty-one dollars. If it was a forty hour week. You wanna set a minimum and maximum for gross, or you wanna do it hourly?
Which fifteen, number ten?
Fifteen?
Fifty, fifteen dollars, fifteen.
So actually, tax, forty hour week, fifteen dollar rate, thirty thousand, six hundred.
I'm not even paying a lot, Debbie, it's a twenty-nine. Let's go at least what we pay that Debbie.
Twenty-nine? Highway guys are a good thing for trouble. I did it, kids, oh man.
I don't know, what about, I think maybe in the winter, so... So, but, so did you work?
Thirty-four, two, eight, four.
Just make that the max?
Yes, yeah. Because that's, um, that is what it does.
Okay, yeah.
Check dollars.
Thirty-four, two, eight, four.
Yeah.
Okay, so minimum twenty-nine, max thirty-four, two, eighty-four?
Yeah, and it'll be the same, you have special operators.
The general is exactly what this was submitted to, I believe. All right, we're almost there.
Looking to...
Health department?
Next one's a doozy.
What's that? It's a doozy?
Okay.
Well...
Nurse, health officer, obviously, those are all with the six hundred. Sanitarian, as back as it's six hundred. Part-time, or the board members come back, right? But the kicker in, I didn't have on my notes where we get this up, but you got Nolan. And what, Brad, I just made that one, you sure?
I had circles on it.
Yeah. So, yeah. But we may have to do additional preparation time, but that because, that, that with the circles on it, shows the ten thousand dollars, which is what I picked up for the preparedness director. But, under that, it shows assistant sanitarium, sixteen, seven, twenty-one. And that shows that, that was what was adopted here. But then when you go over to what you've got, that he actually got put into the gateway, and he gave me a, pointing out of why he actually put in gateway, which I just went back and compared and checked off the totes, and I came, and I came up with this one with a zero. Yeah, so it looks like to me the sixteen, seven, twenty-one did not get put into our budget numbers.
Well, yeah, so I kind of like to split the assistant sanitarium and emergency preparedness director. Those, those salaries were flip-flopped, is what it looked like.
It's the other...
But we didn't transfer the two, and, and, and the seventeen, three, twenty-one is a six hundred dollar raise.
Right.
But we didn't flip the ten thousand into the assistant sanitarium position.
That's what we were short, right?
But, but what I show that we've been paying in, these two numbers together are still less.
No, what, what we had to, and that's why I circled that, because what we had paid in was the twenty-one, seven, twenty-two, and five thousand dollars from some...
Other area.
Other area, some other grant that, because we're looking at Fund Eight-O-One. And there was additional money brought in from another location. So...
Yeah, so, but so, the whole, but it... Because the next got him making less than the sanitarium, which...
See, I, I thought we were leaving the twenty-one, seven, and I thought we were adding the ten to that.
Which now would be?
Which, I, I thought, I thought that was the number we were shooting at, but I don't know what we advertised. And see, that's why I circled up on the, on the sanitarium, I circled the twenty-six, five, and if you added your six hundred there, ninety-seven, one, your twenty-seven, one, which is where we're at.
We published thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-two.
Right. You published, what was it, thirty?
Thirty thousand, two, twenty-two.
Thirty thousand, what?
Two, twenty-two. And we reduced it to twenty-seven, one.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So we talked about this in the budget here, and this...
Yeah, we had, yeah.
The last couple of years, that whole...
Well, we had both them, yeah.
We did?
Yeah, they both came in, we talked to them quite detailed, because I was surprised about the fact that probably we kinda got in there, but we got two sanitarians now, and the whole idea was that he was gonna be retired, which you can't, I mean, that's, that hasn't been a choice. And I think we, and the whole bottom line is, we were led in that direction, that this was coming down, probably they were was going to do that, and...
We said it's not, we told him, it's not.
No, and he told me it's not, I mean, we should've, we should've just taken, and I think we used to come back to that position. Because we increased it full-time with the understanding that there was gonna... So now there's this grant that they get for their preparedness grant, so what he is gonna just move that in, they help pick up his pay, then the rest of it's coming out, county general fund.
Right.
And that's not, we're still funding an extra position down there that we really weren't figuring on doing.
And there's, there's flip-flopping positions.
Yeah.
They did that a couple of years ago. Actually, when they were at the hospital, kind of when that preparedness thing kicked in, the hospital had an employee that resided in the health department, and was doing a lot of preparedness issues. And then, it kinda changed, the state quit doing this, and they, they get money from here, there. So, we took all of our part-time money and added some to it to hire the sanitarium now, knowing that Nolan basically switched off. We're paying him the part-time money, plus the grant, to make him a full-time person.
Because what we were paying her, when she made, when she made her full-time position, we used to question, that what we should've really done is said, hey, if he's not retiring, if you have to give him a letterman, ten that he's retiring, then we should have backed that thing, we gotta back that one. Because right now, we're funding two positions.
That would, it depends on how you look at the grant money, you know, they could... I, and I don't know, I don't know, the grant money is not guaranteed, but it's a matter of, does that rise up, or something changes on how you can use it? Because there's some parameters as far as what they can buy, and how they can spend that grant, so...
Well, I showed Nolan, we should have him a thirty thousand, eight, twenty-two, is what I showed. That's why, I mean, that's what I went back and figured, but no.
And see, that, with the twenty-one, seven, twenty-two that I circled, if you added the six hundred dollar raise, what's the difference, and what did you say you had?
I got thirty, eight, twenty-two.
Thirty thousand, eight, twenty-two.
And that was going back from two thousand eleven, and worked my way up there.
Which means, if you're using the ten thousand dollars revenue side of the grant money, then the county's gonna end up doing the twenty thousand, eight, twenty-two, the ten thousand a grant makes the thirty. But do you run all the payroll through Eight-O-One? And grant money go to that fund to pay? Or do you pay from Eight-O-One part of it, and pay from the grant part of it? How's the O P be working on that?
Well, all of that, the break money gets to help with that, from Eight-O-One, for, which, and so...
If that's the case, that, that, that...
It doesn't matter.
The emergency preparedness director line should read the thirty thousand, eight, twenty-two, and you zero out the assistant sanitarium.
But, but they're only getting ten thousand dollars, I wouldn't think you'd wanna... I wouldn't think you'd wanna zero, make that all... I wouldn't think you'd want to zero, make that all one line.
What then?
Or we need to change to, like, put grant and then put general next together, leave it the same title. Because if you lose the grant money, then it's obvious, then their pay's going to drop down.
Yeah, and that'd be easier to see.
And see, that's why, that's why, that's why I don't agree with any of this, and I make it very clear each budget session we have, is because somewhere along the line, if he loses that, he's going to get dropped down, and that wasn't the intent. That was not the intent, you know?
Well, I, I think the two lines is the way to go, it's very clear. Ten thousand in the grant, the difference in the other line, and then there's no question.
And I know in our discussion here, she took him out of assistance sanitaryian because he did all that preparedness stuff.
Yeah, I don't know that he's done any sanitaryian work. So.
I didn't work with Chad, I wondered. Did he work with Chad at all?
This is a matter of what you want to call it.
Okay, so the emergency preparedness, the break money is going to be selling.
You got the seventeen, three, twenty-one. Which was what in this category?
What?
Assistant sanitaryian.
Eight dollars.
Yeah, plus six hundred dollars.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if you said, emergency preparedness director, twenty thousand, eight twenty-two, and then emergency preparedness director, grant, ten thousand, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so we have to be ten thousand.
Forty hour. I think.
Go over it one more time.
If the grant goes away, the department has to grab what they want to do. Maybe not a war, you know, I, you want to do what you can do.
Well, I, I, I think, somewhere along the line, I think, that needs to be addressed with the board, to make sure the board is in sync with what's going on. I just got some, I just, I don't.
I'm, I'm sure.
I don't, no, and they may have been led in that direction too, like we were as council, and, and I just don't like that. I don't think it's right, and I'm afraid that somewhere along the line, he's going to get. And up here, and, and that's not the intent. Okay, so we got ten thousand for the grant, and then how much for the general?
Ten thousand, eight twenty-two.
Okay.
All right, we're good on that? Everything else okay?
And I just left that full over the same way.
I just think that had it, the sanitaryian paid him six twenty-seven.
Yeah, that would be bad.
That was a six hundred dollar raise.
So now we've got to, I think I think that's the question, we've got to do this appropriate first year.
For which you pull over.
And we also need to remove that one.
Because it's coming out of the.
I have no idea how much the operation will be. I don't slide it.
But, yeah, just leaving it up to the back of the emergency plan.
I guess the way you have it, she, in the last year, I just don't know.
But they can't spend it until they get it.
Yeah.
So, don't worry.
And their fiscal year's separate too.
I see.
It's October, it's in October.
They just do that twice, two separate.
Or not even before. I don't know if it's changing a lot, but.
Yeah, it was in a three hundred series, so what she's saying, so they must just get right where the gender check. I think we got that. Do we need to leave this one on?
We took, we took that.
I think we have.
Can we leave it on?
I don't know, I'll stick it out too.
Yeah, so it's in three thousand dollars.
Now we walked it out.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. I thought we were going to be in and out.
I never would have to.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, after going through all the departments, anybody consider making a motion about the salary orders for, um, two thousand thirteen?
I make a motion, we get noted, noted.
Move to second, we thought, uh, two thousand thirteen maximum salary and wage orders, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number for that order, it's very, you know.
Two, dash two.
Dash two. Really did two orders in a year?
First one was a salary one as being ended in January.
All of ours is in a resolution.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we're up to about fifteen or something in resolutions.
All right, we, um, there's nothing else on our agenda, um, but I wanted. Did we, did we, uh, are we okay with the commissioner's transfer request for five thousand employment? You took care of that, did I? Did we do that? On the paper, the phone, we did that?
Yes, it was in that one resolution.
Okay. All right, any other new business from the council?
We need to advertise the additional appropriations on these two payrolls. I'm going to be, that department and. We try to.
Our January meeting?
I'll make a motion to advertise for those initial appropriations, move the age that amounts that pass there. Into the salary.
Okay, thank you Suzanne. There's a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Anything?
Thanks, Sean. Um, that the board brings in form of every day, as you all know, we heard a lot of, um, people commenting on meaning this for the schools. For Tri-Central School, it's very, some very passionate discussions of that. And I was a little concerned because I went back and looked at the EON. Numbers on how much Tri-Central gets for math for over ten years is forty-five thousand dollars over ten years. And with Craig Breeze, it's going to be a lot, maybe twenty thousand dollars, because Craig Breeze is all the way into community schools, whereas EON is part fifty, part one, part million. And so, you know, I, I think that there might, might have been a misconception on the amount of money that this would bring into schools. Obviously, forty-five thousand dollars in ten years is significant. So, um, I was just thinking about how, since it affects, especially the Craig Breeze, if it's just them, that I would just like to throw this out for the commissioners in the council to consider that perhaps taking, um, some of the economic development payment and just giving it as a cash, um, payment to, or with the school. We get, um, well, we've gotten, we have five hundred and fifty thousand now from EON. And if Craig Breeze goes through, you saw the numbers, it's about four hundred thousand a year, it's the same rate it was. So, after hearing them, that the school's struggling and everything, I know that, uh, that those amounts are not going to make a break.
So you're saying twelve thousand dollars per year for the?
Well, you know, it does, it isn't quite that, because, you know, it's phased in, but.
That's great, that's nice.
Yeah, I mean, the first year they did any, I mean, it's only seven thousand dollars more than what they're giving now. That's on EON, okay? So, anyway, um, I had, and I've had a lot of people ask me about that, of whether economic development payment's being used for. And we haven't really had a plan what they're used for, but I think it should be put in the back of the minds that, that it is affecting that part of the county. And if the school was really, uh, you know, on the ropes, I don't see why they couldn't be given a hundred thousand dollars of any kind of development payment.
Now, that increase you're talking about, that's on the profit tax, like, that's on their general side? Or is that just on the?
Right, right. So, I just think it's, I, I just wanted to throw around something to think about, but, um, it should be, I, I think it should go to people that get most setbacks. And, you know, we spent fifty thousand dollars on the comprehensive plan, because that was supposedly, you know, an overall project that affected everybody. So I think that was probably appropriate, that, um, on the budget. I hope that there's some thought given to how it is spent, and that it benefits the people in the area where the projects are taking place.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. The bomb?
Yeah.
Ida?
Two thirty. Where's the guy that's on the bench?
I'm afraid we got our.
Right here, I got it, it's right here. We have, uh, we have to do that, minutes of November twentieth, and, um.
I was a short meeting on the twenty, July thirty-first.
Yeah, July thirty-first. So, does this bring us up to date?
Almost.
Great.
I think we've got, we'll need two more sets, but it's still a good, a good percent, yeah, we're getting close.
You don't know what your dates are, do you?
Uh, twenty in October, February to December third. Well, yeah, I have one, they, uh, they made the, they got all the other special ones, not the exact sessions.
I'd move to be approved that July thirty-first special meeting minutes as presented.
Second. And move to second, all those in favor approving the July thirty-first, two thousand twelve minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. November twentieth? Have a chance to look at that.
I did have a question. The deep, uh, afterwards.
Okay, all right.
Is it a transfer? Yeah, that was, that was the largest, the bulk of the meeting, approving this chapter first. And I, I copied the, um, the account numbers straight off the, the transfer documents themselves, so they would match.
You want to strike that set? I just can do that.
If it goes on in the next paragraph, it's at the committee.
Okay, so we're striking that one one, you see it, we're seeing that it's about, almost halfway through that person.
Will be part of the review.
Yeah.
Do we have somebody from the leader here?
The resolution been called for. And then Suzanne just went down here at the end, or there's a. Actually, that would be the end of this.
Uh-oh. He wasn't there.
Do they want to be? Do you want to add another?
I don't know, I can squeeze that. I'm state deprived as it is.
You don't want to be more leads?
I wonder about hallucinating at this point.
I feel, um, Linda Williamson said.
Do I see anything else for the transfers or?
No, I just want to make this here on the bottom for meeting. Okay, and that where it says that we're waiting for the, um, Jack, any blood issues or burns or total scope.
Uh-huh.
I just want to bring this up, that, and, and I don't know if any of you received it, but I have not received anything from that. Showing us where she came in with two thousand eleven, which is what all the remains here, that one year, that part of the other. And, I mean, I would like to see this spreadsheet, some type of where we were, any of the corrections that's been made, or should have been made, or projected to be made, and where our new total would be for two thousand eleven, because right now, we started mouse eleven, we started mouse twelve. So, I don't feel it, I mean, I know she's done a lot of work, done a lot of work, get some of these funds done, Suzanne's done work on them. Um, Jane and, uh, this Bayer's office did a lot of work on the drainage fund. Um, you know, Brad's done various, I've done various, and, and I just, I've not seen any numbers. Not seen any numbers, the reports that we've gotten just have this funds done, this is, we've done, I want to see some numbers, so we know because we're now at the point where the treasurer still isn't bouncing back to the person being, because a lot of these corrections haven't been done. So now we've got Suzanne Miller coming back in to check on some corrections that should have been done at this point. And, you know, are we going to need her to move forward, because, you know, we're not, we're not any better on the treasury side.
I haven't seen any actual.
I'm, I'm just not sure, and, and I don't think. I'm just not sure and, and I don't think you've got any that, have you gotten a spreadsheet from her with corrections to do or? Somewhere, I want to see some numbers somewhere, you know? So I know that we make some leaps, ways on her. I know that there's corrections been done. I checked the cashes and she's done will tax. Will tax?
It would be nice, it must be nice to know that we balance with the treasurer, that's something.
Well, I, my figure, if we took, you know, my, my thought was that we were, I didn't expect anything by the way to make changes two thousand eleven because we closed that year out during two thousand twelve and all this, but I thought we would take that number and then we would show our adjustments and then come back to a new number in which Bonita should balance back to because her numbers reflect a lot of changes in it. I mean, they reflected the EFPs were there at the bank. And that's the problem, they weren't reflecting on the other side. So if all that's there, and, you know, we've got to have a number to go back to with Bonita and then work forward. And so Bonita balanced with the banks because she's never been able to balance with the other. So, we're still not where we need to be.
The, um, you know, it's concerning to me is that we were supposed to do a report for every commissioner meeting and you were supposed to get one every council, but we had not for the last three years. That management all from that. And I know you talked about the drainage work things that we did work really hard getting those things, but getting those done, but from the last ledger, obviously, they're, they're still not, the general grant agreement still is not getting...
Those corrections weren't made. Well, I mean, we're not getting the corrections made and we're never going to get any, but now we are, you know, I, I just...
Are you open for comments?
I'm open for, I, I, I'm open for anything that'll help.
We've paid, how much have we got allocated for?
Well, she's been paid twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So we're still in the thirty, the original, we got to start in the next...
There hasn't been a claim submitted, but that doesn't, but the last claim that was paid was several weeks ago.
So do you know, because she's...
Well, I, I thought she had, had about, uh, somewhere they may have given a hundred and two hours.
So two hours off the other.
I think she's...
And then she's done settlement now. Okay. I think we need to get a grip on this before we get into that ten thousand.
Is, is there any way that, like, two commissioners, two council people, others sit, sit down with Jackie? I mean, just listen to them and say, you know, here's what we need to do.
Right, you...
Well, I mean, we keep talking about this and...
Well, we...
Well, we try, but I understand. Yeah, I mean, I think the, the work that's been done, the volunteer work that's been done, you know, could come to culmination and the, the thing that I'm seeing is it's not being entered into the data. The ledger doesn't show these things that are identified as potential errors or, or even, or whatever you want to call it. It's just a journal entry. But I thought, you know, a, a morning of sitting in here with nobody bothering you, spread out on the tables and, and we've done this before where we could shoot it on the wall and you could, you could enter it, date it because you're hooked into the system. So those things could flow and then if Jackie was here, that'd be great, but we're just, we're not getting, we're identifying issues, but they're just not being rectified. So how do you, how do you get over that hump and without seeing what you're changing? I, you know, personally, I think if, if Benita is balancing with the bank, then the checks that have been paid and the deposits and things, but if we're not seeing them on the ledger side, we, we got to get that work through. And at this point, you know, at some point in twelve, we said, okay, we're done with eleven, we just closed it and went forward. Well, now that twelve's over, when do we say, just draw the line on twelve and let's go on into thirteen?
See, that's why, I don't know if you were, one of the meetings where I asked about where we're at, she said that the state board council is supposed to walk for eleven? And I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, we haven't seen any numbers for you made any adjustments. So I, I'm still...
I think if you, if, if the council provides money to pay, I mean, I think you need, and I would need, you know, answers from her. Too, she needs to be held accountable, someone, not a thing we're doing.
And then we go back to this bond issue where it says that that's one of the issues that we're waiting on filing against. The bond that's still sitting out there because we're waiting to see, well, we've already had the audit. You know, it's not public yet, but when it comes out public, you know, that will be something we'll use. But, you know, Jackie's numbers, I don't think is going to have anything to do here. We shouldn't be waiting on her numbers on this bond issue. The bond should have been filed against.
On, on day one, Jackie said that she is not going to enter the correction.
No, she's got that.
That's not her, she's going to identify. So when you identify and you have this list, where's that list?
That list, where is that list? And she's all these things, and these things should have been put in the system to correct. But she's worked on two thousand eleven, done with that, but no two thousand twelve adjustments have been made either.
But I, I personally do not understand, and I know we talked a lot about this at the, at the last regular committee meeting, but I would like Jackie to focus on corrections. I think she needs to leave settlement alone, let Lyle with the software work with you on settlement. They can focus on that and she can focus on, the original discussion was, you're going to look and identify errors. You're going to go through all those things. So if she can focus herself into there and leave Lyle alone with settlement and you work on corrections, I'm willing.
Settlement's done. Settlement's done and that was an additional, that was a different, that's not part of our, but it is done. So checks are out.
We got that done in a very quick order.
Greg, are, are we still, are you still on record?
Yes, we are.
If, if, uh, if you just closed two thousand eleven and all of a sudden you're going to say, well, we still closed two thousand twelve, how can we expect the bonding company to go back and bond us on, on, when you said you, you actually agreed to, everything all right? So I, I...
Exactly. This bond should have been filed against in the very beginning. And left open. It would be left open. It's just like a tort claim. You open it up, it's there, you know?
Well, it, that has happened, but we don't have any really supporting details. The flow is not there.
But if you, if you say we've closed two thousand eleven and we've, and you closed, I assume you agree, you're saying I agree with what's there. What, what do you hate?
But do we have?
I, I don't know.
But see, we have only five days left at twenty o'clock and the corrections haven't been made. I think when we started this in June, we never, ever thought that we would be sitting here on December twenty-sixth and the corrections hadn't been there yet.
Right.
And, you know, Scott, you asked for the, the ledgers for the, the, uh, ledgers to be sent each department had, and they were. I don't know if they're reading it back.
Did you get very much back to any?
I got some.
So that he doesn't change?
Went to Alter, came back with a couple of very small...
They were minimal. So see, those minimal things could have been done in-house.
Yeah, I asked for, I hoped to review the council, so I was going to look at that. I wanted to see the rainy day fund because EMA and the annual stuff's coming out of there. And I never saw, I'm sure that we didn't see the coroners and stuff. There's not a lot of activity there, but, but that, now that that got disseminated to us, I didn't get a review.
I sent that, but I must have sent to the wrong, the wrong email address. Because I, I did send the coroner's ledger out, oh, a month ago. And I don't know, because I asked for, I asked for a response by, I think, the seventh of December. I may have sent to the wrong, the wrong email address.
There, there are errors in there. There are errors in there. So, and I, you know, the commissioners had five budgets and I submitted all those errors.
So you looked at rainy day?
I did look at it. And they're up there for instance, House of the E M, there's claims taken out of two different ones and...
Two different lines on them.
Can't do that. One of them's thought was inappropriate. So, you know, there's things that I know are wrong, but, you know, you feel very frustrated and your hands are tied because, you know, I can't physically go in and make the change. But if I tell someone and it's there and it still doesn't happen, then it's just going to be, I mean, they have to close the books as they are at some point at, you know, two, twenty twelve, and that's what it is.
That's why I think I would surprise if Jackie doesn't have just a listing of all these things that she found.
That's what I expected to see, something showing where we were at when we started. Any corrections that's been made, adjustments been made in one of our lines.
Well, and I, I expected that we would be, she'd be in front of us at the meetings too, which not was supposed to happen. And I went and seen it for three meetings, thought, I don't know what's going on. But I say that you guys were in charge of that ten thousand dollars on the rainy day, that was yours. I, I'd say pull it back.
The commissioners didn't contract them now. So I think it's going to go back to them, maybe with our recommendation as to what to do. We need to do exactly like Jim's saying, and, and maybe we can get that further next year because we've tried and do it soon. That needs to be something we address in January before that ten thousand dollars starts speaking, but because we may very well need to reallocate money on, on Bonita. Because Bonita's not balanced with the bank.
So if our books are closed, why do you just spend ten thousand dollars on them? They're closed, they're closed.
I'm talking Bonita's side. Bonita's side, they're closed. And Bonita's cash book carries a plenty of those, which go into her grand total. And those totals, as long as those totals are off.
You know, but the contract for the ten thousand was with Jackie. That's what I'm saying, is that, and it was for a specific thing with the ledger. I'm saying that someone, you guys need to get together and just determine whether you want that extra ten thousand dollars to buy the door.
That's right, that's what I was saying.
For, for that purpose, yeah.
Okay, we got the substance a little bit, but I think it's helpful to have Joe here and Jim here because they're going to be, they're going to let that hopefully make some progress on. So we were looking at the minutes, November twentieth. Anybody make a motion on those?
Make a motion, second.
Second, thank you. Suzanne, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? What other things, Dan?
Well, still on the minutes, the minutes that you haven't approved, have the outgoing members going to have any input on that? Or, I mean, it doesn't really seem fair since you're, you should have.
Well, there's a solution for that. Um, to be honest, there's a solution. It has been recommended.
There'll be four, there'll be four. Nobody majority here next year. That'll take a vote on it. Madonna, three of us. See, that'll give the majority a vote.
The year minutes.
It's not next year anymore.
How many minutes you could have?
Just, that's, three.
I have three, I think.
Three separate.
Actually, uh, before you were here, that, that may be in the eleven.
Oh, it's still hanging out there. Maybe it'll still be hanging out by May of thirteen too.
So that's a good idea, that's a good point. We're going to have four council members here.
Yeah.
That will at least represent the two thousand thirteen.
Well, on that May thirty-first meeting, you guys, really, why was the public hearing there half, the past few minutes for public?
There are notes.
For that May thirty-first?
Yeah.
It's May thirty-first?
I thought you said that was...
They have that approved.
Okay, anything else?
There were a lot of things missing out.
Well, on the subject of, of what Jackie Clementson did, had she provided any corrections to the...
Which is tough right now. I don't think she has. The answer is no, I believe.
Not as far as numbers. It's just, it's just been her report just says, and maybe that's what she thought her report would be.
Because she, she came to the dispatch meeting, nine one one meeting, and said, okay, I found these things. Like, I suggest you do this, I'm going to move that, I'm going to go to the commissioners meeting and have them do such and such and such and such. And, and that was that. And she said, and this fund is done. So the data behind that, the, the spreadsheets that she used or whatever it was, that's what we need a copy of to show that this is the route she took. We were here and now she got to there. But, because I, you remember that meeting? And so she did, she went over the detail because there was the multiple funds, you had the phone, it's cell, you had the county and all these kinds of things. So, so yes, she looked at it, she wasn't happy because we didn't use rainy day money, which she know, she found that and all that kind of stuff. But how could she show us today how she got through that?
Her paper, her, her...
Yeah, that's a major...
She should be part of the record. She should be part of the record as to why.
And how it was corrected.
You're still, you're still on.
I know, but I'm, I'm being careful now. Has, has Jackie given any reports to the commissioners or the council other than her one-page written report and her oral reports that she gives to the commission? There's not a, an email report on the...
No. What you, what you, what you mean is what we've got.
And uses accounts, which is the same piece of paper.
Well, some of them.
Okay, Bob?
It'd be great to know.
May I ask a question?
Well, she's always said that she found corrections but was not entering. So are you telling me she's never given anybody the corrections to do?
She has. Otherwise our wheels or tax wouldn't balance and, uh, these different funds that are, are correct now wouldn't have, that, that wouldn't be correct.
Okay. But, but she gave you a spreadsheet or she, however you came back to doing the will tax, then that spreadsheet is what we would like to see as documentation. I found this and this and this that should have been to will tax instead of within, you know, P T R C. Or, that's what I'm talking about. We don't have anything to see where she's taken any of this. And I'm not saying she has not found things, but I know she has. It's just, what is it and where did it go and?
I was grabbing on.
Yes.
And if she's not entering the things that she's found, somebody in the office has to. Some of the things have been corrected, the drainage hasn't. But is there one of your staff that, because they would have to have something to work from.
And I think the drainage, that was relatively, when she found the errors, it was relatively easy going to make corrections.
But it hadn't been posted.
We found the errors. That's what I'm saying, but, but there was, it was relatively easy going to make corrections there.
But it was October, it was October twenty-sixth. And, you know, the general grant agreement on the ledger is still showing that been corrected.
Is it speculated that the treasurer's office problems are brought on by the previous armory's problem?
No.
Yeah.
Because that doesn't stack, the treasurer's thing doesn't stack along.
Not, not on both.
It's a product of, yes.
The two offices working in a...
You're unable to balance to the...
They, they have to balance to...
They have to, they have to.
She's able to balance to every bank but Harris, which is the main bank. And she's still off.
Do you know what that balance is? You don't miss one. Anything else before we motion? I want to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'm going to adjourn.
Sure.
No, I'm... You see the... I don't think I've heard no.
Why?
He's not asked. I don't know.
Joe says, I'm not sure I want to, I said, well, I have your best book, I'm not sure.
That's fine.
Maybe you'll hurt my ear. I'm assuming it's not my favorite.
This makes me...
If we balance where we're off in two thousand eleven, the banks, that's up, that the bank, we were two hundred eighty-two dollars and somewhat cents to our book.
Two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven.
So we're arguing that then.
And that's where Suzanne had come in about those books. And then she had, we were actually two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars on. She has all these questions.